Greetings, Jim, Bill.
Yeah, how are we doing?
I think, and hi Megan, I think that's you. So we are. Yeah, we're all logged on. Jim, I made you co-host just as a. I didn't forget to do that, so. I'm dying to know who is get it done machine. That's a great. It's a great. Moniker. Welcome to autumn. It's finally, finally cold. Susan is not able to make this meeting, so we'll. We'll muddle on through. We're excited to have five guests. Hi Megan, how are you?
Hi. I'm okay. How are you?
Lovely, lovely.
I just finished a work meeting and I'm here. So it's been a great, it's been a day. It's. I'm here. That's all that matters.
All right, all right. Shake it off.
Right. Happy Tuesday.
It's Monday and Tuesday all rolled into one. That's what that's. Double whammy. All right, we are waiting for. Matt, we'll give it one more minute.
Matt said he's having some internet issues.
Oh, all right.
Sent a message.
Okay. Well, with that. It's unfortunate. Aaron will be joining us. She's not here yet either. Well, let's. Let's call the. The meeting to order. Welcome to October 11th Planning Board Meeting. Just a quick roll call. Bill Spalding.
Here.
Megan Minnesota.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
And myself, Theo, we're here. We have a quorum and Matt will join us momentarily. And. Joined by Aaron Kokinda and. We are. Without our esteemed colleague Susan Allton. The. Did we get the August or the September 27th meeting minutes? Okay. Or you know, I do have them in my folder. I'm sorry, a little out of sorts. So first order of business is any comments or? Do we want to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Motion to approve the meeting from September 27th.
Okay, thank you, Jim. All right. All right, Bill, I get you seconded and so we can take a vote. Megan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, Theo, yes, all in favor. Okay. The, so the, the third item on our agenda is the easement to the. Town on land on Hemlock Road for an energy park. The. Really would. Like to wait. For. For Matt, if at all possible. The. Are we? Unfortunately, I don't, I guess, I guess we can't. There's really nothing to, to juggle around without him, so.
Right.
Pardon?
Theo, just through you as a chair, I'd like to suggest that. We review the easement and Matt can catch up if he needs to, just so we can get through and it just. I, I think would be good for our board to find out like, what is our role in this? Like is? Are we reviewing this? Are we just acknowledging it? Will there be future public meetings or forums? That the planning board will need to hold. So I'm familiar with what's happening between the schools and with the, with the vote, so it would just be interesting to. Hear what our board's part will be.
I'd be happy to comment on that, Bill. It's great. They get appropriate.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. And Jim, if you wouldn't mind, yeah. Let's get it started. That's a great, a great beginning. If you wouldn't mind outlining the entire. Easement, that would be helpful.
Sure. So I'm Michael McCarthy. I represent the light department. That's okay. Pete is, Pete Dion is on board. As is Dave Paulson, our engineer, kind of procedurally to Bill's question. We are petitioning the town. Actually, it'll be the town council that'll carry the warrant, that'll sponsor the warrant. But we, if I, if I may just give you some brief background, we would be for. The town council on 928P will address all the details of the proposal. And. Ask them to sponsor this warrant. We had a long discussion with them in public hearing and I think we have their full support and I do believe. That they'll be sponsoring this warrant article because the town charter, and this is an answer. To the, to the more recent question, requires that the planning board comment, make a recommendation either ought to pass or not to pass. At the town meeting on any matter relating to land use. The matter was referred to the planning board for just that. So technically, although it doesn't require a public hearing, just a public meeting. The planning board's role is to make a recommendation to town meeting. As to whether or not you endorse or support or think this, this warrant article ought to be adopted. At town meeting, that's simply it. It won't. I don't believe it'll need to become, come before the planning board in the future. That's the limited role. That, that your board has with regard to this matter. So. Kind of procedurally as well, we're asking for two things, the easement. So that we can build the energy park, the, the micro grid. And then second, that's, that's item number one in the warrant. And then item two is because this is public land. Back in 1955. This land was deeded to the town by a corporation, if you get the name right now, but. For playground purposes, there was a finance committee vote to that effect. And that was recorded with, with the deed and town meeting action at that time was required to accept the property. So because. It had the word playground purposes in the vote, it falls under Article 97 of the Articles of Amendment to the State Constitution. What that all means translated or distilled to its essence is that we need legislative. Approval, a home rule petition approved by the state legislature allowing this use, even though it's an easement. On a part of the land. So it's basically an easement over one acre of a six acre parcel. But despite the fact that it's limited to that portion of land, despite the, the fact that it's an easement, not an outright grant of a ownership interest. Legislative action is required. So that is why the second part is in their vote and the reference to Article 97. Does that answer your question, Bill? I hope it does. Okay. And with that, you know, I would. Turn it over to Pete, if it's okay with the chairman, to kind of walk through the, the details of the, of the plan.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
Sure.
I believe you all received that the same presentation that we gave to town council. Again, my name is Pete Dion. Thank you for having us tonight. It sounds like you are somewhat familiar with the project. So the genesis of this project came when we began talking.
Pete, does it, does it make sense to pull up the, the actual?
Yeah, if you, if possible.
Do you want me to try to do that, Peter? You get that?
I, I don't have it on mine.
Let me see, let me see if I can pull it up.
I believe, I believe you have the ability to share your screen.
Yeah. And I have a PDF of it too, if you want me to pull it up.
Does that come up?
Yes.
There we go.
All right. Yeah, yeah, scroll down.
Yeah. So again, the, the genesis of the project came when. The, the tech, which is further along at this point. Wanted to go for gas heat and although we didn't have a restriction against that, we much prefer that they go with an electric heating system and be basically. A mostly electric building, the only, what they are going to still have for gas will be. Cooking and lab use for gas only. They. But we didn't want the building to be all electric heat. There are several, I mean, all gas heat, several reasons for that. The first of which is that it would strictly, it would significantly add to our winter peak for gas use, which is already a problem to begin with. Obviously, you see what's going on in the region and worldwide right now with natural gas. So adding to that problem was not going to help anybody. And the second reason is from our, from the state's goals to be net zero by 2050. Having a, a gas heated building does not help achieve that goal. So. Dave and I began meeting with the tech design committee last year. And worked with them. And what we came up with to, to make this project work was that we would install what we calling the energy park. Which would. Not only require that they bring all electric service to the, to the, to the building for their infrastructure, but that we would provide the backup systems. What would be required typically is a. Almost 2,000 KW diesel fire generator at each school. So once. The tech was built in the new Wakefield High School would each require a 2,000. KW diesel generator. What we're able to do by taking over the emergency response responsibilities. And bringing it to a central location, we can optimize the use of the infrastructure. We can reduce the size of what's needed for backup generation. But we're also going to do is install a battery as the primary backup. So the energy park itself, the one acre that we're seeking on Hemlock Road would be for the purpose of having a. Five megawatt, 15 megawatt hour battery. And a natural gas fire generator that will replace the two larger diesel generators. So that's ultimately the goal of the project. What the, by us doing it this way, it also reduces the cost to both building committees by over a million dollars. In addition to that, what we're, we're looking at is installing at the outset. I'm sure you're probably familiar with the building code, especially with these state projects. They have to be EV ready and solar ready, but they don't have to have it installed. As part of the project with the energy park, we're going to install solar on both roofs as they're built. And the, the. Primary source of the solar will be used by the buildings to offset their load. But any overflow that's not being used by the building will flow back to the energy park to charge the batteries. So that's the primary purpose of putting solar on both these buildings. We're going to maximize what we can put on each roof. Again, it'll be used mainly by the buildings to, to reduce their consumption day to day in these all electric buildings, but. To the extent that they are in non-coincidental times, we'll be, we'll be feeding it back to the, to the energy park for battery. So what we're creating in this energy park in this area of land is, is a true micro grid now, so that we could separate from the grid. And serve the, the, just this facility now, these two large high schools. Independently from the system if we had to. Obviously, we never want that to happen, but if we had to, we could isolate from the grid. We'd also use this for, for peak shaving purposes. One of the things that adds cost to the ratepayers is that we. When we set our peaks coincident with the system. In, in, you know, ISO New England, it adds cost to, to all ratepayers. So the extent that we can manage that by using a resource like the micro grid, like the energy park. That reduces everybody's cost. So that's another reason that it's kind of a win-win project for both of us. So that's the main reason that we're, we're trying to work with this again, from a gas perspective, reduce gas consumption from an electric perspective, manage our capacity needs. I think, you know, I, I actually, oh, and in addition to the rooftop solar. Again, the building code requires that they be EV ready. We're actually going to provide. Seven EV chargers that are dual headed to each school. At the outset and make sure that they're installed from the beginning so that we'll have 14 spaces at the tech and 14 spaces at the new high school at a minimum. That would be ready for electric vehicles. Again, it's bumping up the. From the requirement of just being EV ready to being actually used. On the location that we're talking about, you know, location we're talking about, this is facing. Down Hemlock from the tech, looking back toward Farm Street. It would be on the left-hand side. It's just past the security gate going into the tech. It would be on the left-hand side and that's the area that we'd be looking. For the one acre easement. A small section of it would be where the gate would come in. This would be the streetscape after the, the. Park is installed. We still, we're going to set it a minimum of 25 feet back so we can save as much vegetation on the front as possible. And then we'll. We'll install the battery, the, the park from there. The most, most adjacent to the street will be the batteries. There'll be a driveway in the middle and then the generator would be the furthest away from the street. That's the schedule. The schedule is designed to make sure we meet the needs of the. Is planning, Dave, I think your mic's on. The. The design is to. Be ready for the tech first, obviously, and we should be able to accommodate all the needs of the high school, which is subsequent to that.
So Peter, just, just restate what you, you said, just make sure I understand correctly. The intent of this battery park is to have the EV, or sorry, the solar. Infrastructure on the roofs of the buildings and this one acre easement is really for the backup infrastructure.
Right. Yeah, each school is required to have the emergency backup. So each school would have been required to have a 2,000 KW generator based on their size and all electric load. What we're doing by the, the battery will actually, will have a battery, will also have a smaller transformer at each station that'll be alive all the time from the battery. And that will meet the requirements of the code to serve as the immediate emergency backup system for the building. Then the generator and our, obviously our system itself would provide further backup. A couple of other things that we're talking about obviously is the educational value of this, obviously. We're, we're, you know, we are applying for a grant from the APPA to develop. Educational tools from, from this resource. This is, is a very unique. Situation where we're going to have solar from two different buildings, a battery, a generator. And we're also, we are, because we're asking for an acre because we are saving a little bit of space for the future for. Potential new developments in terms of distributed generation. We don't want to reinvent, we're not going to clear the land at this point. But we want to deal with the easement all at once and save some of that land potentially for. Any kind of evolution in terms of distributed generation technology. Flywheels are having some, some success and there, there'll probably be other things that happen over the next 15 to 20 years. So they'll. We will have the ability to tie in any future development coming down the road.
So how much, how much of this one acre easement are you planning on utilizing in this initial phase to service the schools?
About two thirds.
Okay.
Pete, did you mention the cost savings to the schools from not?
Yeah. So as I said, it's, each, each school will save about 1.2 million at the outset. Not to mention that the, the operating cost savings, we estimate approximately a third of their electric use would be offset by the solar in the roof. Each roof is a little bit different. The tech will have a little bit less solar than the. Proposed high school at this point, based on roof design. It looks like the, the high school might be able to accommodate a little bit more solar based on their current. Design and planning. I don't know if you had any other questions, but that, we just wanted to give you a quick summary of what the project is all about. We are working on applying for, like I said, an educational grant from the APPA to. Develop educational tools that both schools would be able to take advantage of.
Thanks for the quick review and presentation, Peter. That land right there, before you go in the gate on the right, that slopes up pretty quickly. How much excavation will you need to do? I know you said you're not going to remove stuff now, but that seems to rise really fast in there.
So if you look at the location, the topography, we're going to rise up a little bit off the driveway, but the, the base level. Is about 92 foot elevation and so the park will sit at about that level. We have enough room before it actually climbs up that steep hill. So the, the back part of the lot would be that where the hill climbs. So we will have to take it down from about 96 to 92 and move some around, but. We won't have to take out the side of that hill. It'd sit back at far enough that, based on the way this is laid out. John Argren did our, did our site survey for us and. We were able to lay it out so that we wouldn't have to blast out that hill at all.
That's really, that's really helpful. So savings of 1.2 per school at the outset or? Together.
No, 1.2 per school at the outset when capital cost. And then like I said, approximately one third of their. Electric bill on an ongoing operating basis.
Interesting. Great.
And again, the value for the rest of the ratepayers and the reason that. WMGLD is doing this is twofold. A, it's going to keep our gas capacity, peak capacity cost down by not adding. But our most expensive gas is that gas that on those peak heating days, when this would be contributing among the highest load. So this, there's savings for our gas system customers based on avoiding that cost. And on the electric side, we will use the park as a capacity resource on peak days. To offset our peak load on the electric side, which also has savings benefit to the electric ratepayers.
Question for Theo and Aaron. Did we have any emails that came through this week, building up to the tonight's meeting? From anybody from the town? Regarding this topic?
Residents, no. There was an email that I believe, or I'm sorry, a letter that came from Steve Mayo. Again, just discussing the, the process of which the planning board is part of it as well as the warrant. But other than that, I have not received any emails in regards to this personally.
Theo, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm not aware of any at the moment. Thank you for asking.
You're thinking of how we've, we've done this in the past where. Town meeting. Article comes up. Presentation's done similar to this by Peter or Mr. McCarthy, however it's done, I think. Then our board is usually asked whether we recommend favorable action or not. And I believe that's what we need to do this evening is a letter we go from. We would vote as a board and then a letter would go from our board to town council for the town warrant recommending favorable action or not. Sometimes at the podium, we're asked some questions though. So I just wanted to open that up to see if there's anything. That we should be prepared for as a board. Before we do vote on this, has any, has there been any? Pushback from any particular group in town or anything that we should be prepared for to discuss tonight?
None that we're aware of. This was, as they said, it was on the town council agenda in a full public hearing. There was no, there was no opposition voice there. We haven't, I, I don't believe, I certainly haven't heard any and. Nothing came up there. I think it's unanimously supported by the town council. It's one of the maybe more unique proposals and that appears to be just a, you know, a win-win scenario.
Yeah, personally, I love this. I'm glad to see it going through. It's, it's. It's the right way. So as an architect, as a. Hopeful future. Hopefully for the future, I, I see this as the right way to go. I don't know if there's any more discussion that we need to have as a board, if there's any other members. I don't know. Mr. Chair, if you want to. Call for a vote or is there any more discussion?
Yeah, Jim or Megan, any, any other discussion?
And Kai, I can't talk. Can I confirm that you guys received the letter from Steve? I believe it Susan sent it out to you guys?
You know, I, I apologize. I missed that. You know, I, I apologize, I missed that letter.
Yeah, I missed it too.
I don't know if I've seen a letter. I've seen an email from Mister Mayo that was sent to, sent to us as a part of a larger email chain. Um, where he attached the the presentation that uh, was just presented. And then also explained that uh, per section three ten B, that's why. Were, we are being asked to make a recommendation on.
Yeah, so that's uh, that's the letter I'm referring to, yes. Um, it was a formalized letter on his leather, letterhead that was a part of, I think, the packet that Susan sent, so. Um, but I just want to confirm that you all saw, saw that and yes, it is just a recommendation from the planning board.
In that case, um, Theo, if it's okay with you, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorable action on the uh, proposed microgrid warrant. Uh, which reads, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town council to grant a perpetual exclusive easement. For no consideration to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. On a one acre portion of certain town owned land shown on Town of Wakefield Accessors Map. Thirty, number forty A as parcel, oh ten twenty six A, title reference Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds. Book eighty five twenty six, page two eighty seven. The property as shown on plan, uh, on a plan of land entitled easement area sketch, Wakefield, Massachusetts, dated. August third, twenty twenty two, drawn drawn by Thomas Winslow, PLS, Hayes Engineering, of which. A plan files on file, the town clerk, to construct and operate a microgrid in the form of an energy park. Which would include, but not necessarily limited to, battery, energy, so, storage, solar generation, natural gas generation and related equipment. And two, to authorize town council to petition to the state legislature. To permit said grant of land easement under Article ninety seven. Of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or to see what the town will do about it.
I'll second that. Thanks, Jim.
All right, um, all in favor? Uh, Megan?
Yes.
All right, Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And and myself, yes. Um, uh, I would, uh, thank you, the motion passes. So we um, we have to send a a formal letter. Okay.
Yeah, so I would send a formal letter from our letterhead from you, Theo.
All right.
If you don't have that, I will send that to you tomorrow or tonight.
Yeah, I do not have it, so that would be great.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Peter and Mike for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys for making, for making it much clearer and easier to have that conversation. And also frankly, thank you for doing this.
Oh, no, we're, we're excited about the project. It's gonna be a lot of work, but we're, it's the right stuff to be involved in and it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. All right, good night.
Fabulous, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Terrific, um, that's exciting. Um, item four in our agenda is to review the procedures for changing a street name by law. Um, we are anticipating to have a vote. And um, gonna let, let Bill drive.
Okay, lost my controls there for a second, I apologize. So um, couple of changes, as I got deeper into it over the weekend, I looked at. Um, how uh, the comment from Attorney McGrail and the assessor's side of it. So in highlight. Now, the highlighted text would be the change. So, or approved by the planning board through the subdivision of land process. The reason I chose the subdivision of land over the subdivision control um. Rules and regulations or whatever it is, um, because that's what it states in our um, bylaws. Any questions on this section? Revisions, okay. Second part was a little bit tougher to like digest and figure out because. As I start to change some of the words, yes, the town assessor's office added it to. Um, the town clerk's duties, meaning the town clerk shall within ten days. Added the town assessor. And after that, this is the section that. Might need some help with. The town assessor's office shall assemble a list of the names and addresses. Of all owners of property abutting the way in question and of all persons residing at such properties and notify them via mail. The town clerk shall forward this list and so on. So it's the via mail that I'm not sure of, because in. Past meetings, we discussed, should it be certified mail? Um, and I'm fine with just mail, but. Is just notify them enough? Do we have to put via mail? And that's where I wasn't sure to be very specific about how we should notify.
I admit, it's been a little bit since I went through this little fine tooth comb, but is there another section of this? You can remind me where we notify, because I think that at one point we were, it was specified as certified by a certified mail.
Right, and it's not, it's, and by mailing notice to all owners. And that's, that's where I was going next with it, so. That section that I have highlighted in blue. So maybe just by mail is the right wording.
I would definitely advocate to have at least one round of certified mail based on. As as we've all discussed in the past, the impacts of having your street cha- name changed. And if, you know, uh, mail is is all well and good, but we require certified mail for a whole, all kinds of other. Things that are of less importance from a day-to-day perspective, you know, in terms of uh, adjacent. Activities in construction and development and subdivision and, you know, you know, ZBA and those other types of things. I feel like that we should. We should strongly consider having certified mail as one of those change case.
Yeah, um, Dan Lieber uh, is a member of the public and has joined the meeting and he's got his hand raised, so I'm. Uh, happy to. Entertain your question or comment to this point.
Thank you very much, Mister Earl. I, Dan Lieber, I'm also the chair of the Bylaw Review Committee. And when we thought, when at our last meeting, we briefly discussed the, the proposed bylaw as we saw. Uh, not in much substance, but more of in terms of process and. Uh, to just quickly address some of, some of the issues, if it's a by. As far as mail and certified mail, that's a decision certainly to be made by the planning board. But anything that's by mail, there's a separate bylaw that actually allows electronic mail, provided that a person has agreed to accept that. We actually do have that in our town bylaws as permissible alternative to mailing, and that's partially to reduce costs. So the, I I can, I I can address that particular piece. I don't remember the na- number of that bylaw. Yeah, but that was added about in the prior bylaw review committee about five years ago. The.
Can we?
Other piece of, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, um, uh, I. Can we um, can we leave it, uh, stop, leave it there for the moment and if there are other. Uh, Bill, um, any other sort of questions or comments about this?
No, I'm fine with um, Mister Lieber's comment. I think I do remember that too, where mail meant email as well. I wasn't sure if it could be exchanged one for the other. Um. But I I guess I was confused on that part. I, back to Jim's comment too, I don't mind um, changing this to via certified mail. This is the first time that we see this in the bylaw where. The town assessor will be notifying. The abutter's property owners and persons residing, so. And I think it's important there, and that, that was my bigger question, but I don't wanna interrupt um, Mister Lieber uh, either with any comments.
Okay, all right. Great, um.
Can I chime in here?
Mm-hmm, sure.
So, Bill, you're thinking this is saying that the town assessor will be sending these notices out? That's your understanding of this? Am I mistaken?
Well, from the last meeting, that's what I gathered as a comment. I went back and watched the video too, to see if I understood it correctly.
So, for like definitive subdivisions, they give us the list or the applicant, the list. And then you need to, you get the addresses and you need to send them out either as the applicant or the board itself to that list. The assessor's office itself does not send out the lists. Um, I don't know. Uh, no, Attorney McGrail's on this call and he's done this a number of times. I saw his hand raised, but. My understanding, that is what I've done in the past. Um, it's not, the assessor is just the one providing the addresses, given whatever. The, a butter, a butter's list looks like.
Yeah, um, yeah, Brian McGrail, Attorney McGrail.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, I was actually gonna bring up that point that Aaron just did, I think, is an inconsistency with B and C. It's redundant because it says the assessor is gonna prov- notify them, but then C deals with the planning board gi- giving notice. So I think Aaron's a hundred percent right, and B should just say the town assessors shall assemble a list of the names and addresses of all property. Abutting the way in question, all persons residing and provide the list to the planning board. Which is really already in the last sentence of B. Town clerk shall forward the list with the application of the planning board, because then the planning board under C is the one that gives that notice, as Aaron had pointed out.
So the and notified come out of B. So let me, let me switch, let me switch.
Yeah.
Have a live document up as well, um, the word document. So the town assessor's office shall assemble a list of the names and addresses. Residing at such properties, period. The town clerk shall forward a list together with the application to the planning board for public hearing. So nothing about notifying, notification here at all. Are we leaving it to the applicant to notify? And if so. It should be in this section B. I know we went back and forth with this a few times.
Right, right.
I'm trying to find, uh, I know the exact language we have for our definitive subdivision, so. Uh, that can make it a little more consistent with everything else. We do have uh, under our definitive plans, um. Three twenty, uh, I'm sorry, three twenty ten, um, in the bylaws, um, is certified. And then uh, by the assessors, a butter's list with stamped address envelopes of each of the abutters. And then I'm trying to find the exact language about. I believe it's the applicant that's supposed to be the one that notified, that's supposed to send it out once they receive the abutters list, but I'm trying to find the exact language, so. Uh, I just wanted to throw that in there and if I find it, I'll I'll chime back in.
Right, so while Aaron's looking at that, um, the second part down here, the planning board shall conduct, so. Where was it? The planning board shall give notice. This is the part that Attorney McGrail brought up. By publication and newspaper, yes, we do that. Um, to see, yep, that's part of it. Publication to be at least two days before. And by mailing notice to all owners and residents listed by the town clerk. Think that's the part, Aaron, that is part of our subdivision bylaws as well. If I remember correctly.
Dan Lieber, do you have any, um, I think you're, you're also uh. Preparing to address this, so.
To, to so, to some degree.
Okay.
My, my, the other comment I have, and this was the concern really raised by the bylaw review committee as a body. Was a bylaw unless there is an urgency by the planning board for this to be addressed now. The recommendation is that the bylaw be prepared, which would give ample time for. Uh, necessary pieces to to get refined. And have it go through the process as we're doing the recodification process that we're about to undertake. Of all of the zoning bylaws. So the zoning bylaws as a uh, entire set, we're, we're in the process of having the town hire. A, an attorney who specializes in this and to work with the the town. And our boards will get to have lots and lots of meetings in the future, probably in about a year is my current estimation. But when we're ready for, to actually have those joint meetings to recodify the zoning bylaws. As a unit, because anything that's done now is going to be inserted into the middle of that process. So, the lawyer who, who the town, who the town counts, council. Mullen had, has recommended for this process, has already reviewed the current bylaws. And a bylaw, if it were to be adopted at town meeting in November, by the time it actually gets implemented. And gets added to the town bylaws would realistically be somewhere in March or April. Because it has to then go through the the attorney general's review, from there it has to go through publication review. And so there, there's a process after something goes through the the zoning process, zoning bylaw process. And that can, may cause confusion. Part of the purpose of doing the recodification is. Exactly to the point that several on this call have already made, which is consistency across the bylaws. And I think inserting it into that process makes a ton of sense. I, I'm, I don't have a conceptual problem with the idea of. Doing a rename. There, there are some issues in, that I have with some of the language that I, that I saw. And knowing the level of specificity that the bylaw review committee takes to. It takes to its task, we'll get into heavy discussions of commas, semicolons, uh. If, ands, buts, making sure that I, all fees are justified. It, it gets really, we get into the weeds. And it, it gets pretty intense. But the important part about this is to. Not create additional complexity. And if there is an urgency, then. Our recommendation would be to go forward with, for that urgency, but make sure that part is very well communicated. Because as it stands now, there are enough inconsistencies that I think will also. Feel rushed at to go forward at a town meeting that would happen next month. So that's where I, I look at it and knowing that it will, it would get inserted into it, it would. Would have quite a few questions at town meeting that likely will be able to get vetted out through additional, having additional reviews. On some of the information. So one, one of the, just as it, as two examples of types of questions that. The bylaw review committee would be likely to bring up. There was an application fee of eight hundred dollars. That would need to be. Justified as to exactly where that is, why it's eight hundred dollars, because all fees have to be exactly justified for exact costs. So it can't be imputed costs, can't be shared costs if it's going to be a fee. It, it, especially, it, it would also need to be an exemption process for the names. It says not names of people who are living. But you then get to people who happen to coincidentally have the same name. So, do, again, these are issues that by law review. We actually come up with these scenarios and some of them have borne out in reality. So we, those are some of the things that I would encourage. Figuring out how to handle that, having exception processes. And how to figure out who is residing at an address. A, a proposal to do a name change. Could very easily get challenged because you don't have a current list of who's living. At a, at a set of properties. You may, there, the assessor's office usually has a inaccurate list of who owns the properties, but not who resides at properties. If you think about the new property that is being proposed for Quantipaw Parkway. To figure out who's actually residing at that address if they were to propose to rename Quantipaw Parkway. You're talking about potentially thousands of people, just in, in that one set of structures. Or if you were to propose to rename Main Street or something that's right off of Main Street, where you'd have to notify the abutter. So I'm just. Proposing that, the idea I think is there, even in the name, it talks about street numbers, but street numbers isn't listed. It also doesn't mention things like post office and post office involved. We have enough complexity. As, as Bill Spalding has been at my house knows. Where I live is very confusing. I live on Elm Street and right next to me is Elm Street. There are actually two different Elm Streets that are the same street that come together. There are actually two different Elm Streets that are the same street that come together. And they are, it, it's so confusing. Years ago, it was actually recommended by both the post office and, uh, other delivery services to do rem numbering of my property and some other properties because it was so confusing as to which, which Elm Street things were on, which is different than Elm Square. Um, Elm Terrace and the other Elms that are, that are around. So we, the issue is certainly not new. And I think that with additional vetting, it will really be able to be handled appropriately if it is not an urgent matter. So I, and, and not knowing the history or pieces behind, I think having a process makes sense, but I encourage there to be, uh, additional deliberation to make sure that it is very close to right and then do incorporate the attorney that is being retained for recodification to make sure the language becomes consistent with everything else. That's, th- those are the, that's the bulk of my comments.
It's a very appreciated thing. Thank you, Dan. Um. Bill, any, any thoughts, responses? I, I have a couple.
I'm not sure how to follow that.
Yeah.
Where it's, I understand the, um, the task at hand to re-review and rework the bylaws is monumentous, monumental, yeah, monumental. And I, I really feel that is such an awesome thing that needs to be done because it would take a lot of our angst out of many, many nights of trying to figure things out. So, um, I do appreciate that effort. Um, I don't think there's an urgent. From what we know, um, Matt Lowry shared last week, uh, last meeting that there, I, I think a year and a half ago, there was, um, a petition to the town clerk's office or to town hall for someone who was wanting to find out how to change the name of the street. Um, and that's what prompted us to be proactive and look for bylaw and then see that, um, we didn't have one and that most other towns or cities, it was a planning board's position to, to make sure that street names are vetted, the right people are looking at in the town and notified. Cause we do understand that it could be a very expensive and frustrating transition or change for a lot of people living at an address that the street changes. I don't know. Um, Phil?
So, um, yeah, I, um, I wouldn't say it's, uh, urgent or, uh, like critical, but I also, um, I'm having a little trouble, um, understanding why. Uh, if we, if we try to bring this to town meeting now, it causes a problem for, uh, the, the zoning review in the future. I mean, because either way you're, you're still looking at it. The, and I, so I'll, I'll leave that there. Um, the, the filing fee, um, we, we did look at a number of towns and a number of cities to try to get a sense of what is involved in their filing fee. So that, that's imputed. But then we, we did also directly, uh, inquire the town clerk to, uh, understand that process. And so we got an eight hundred dollar fee. So I think that's, that's a direct cost. So, um, but if this were existing in the bylaw now, you'd still be reviewing it and challenging it, uh, at a later date. So, um.
Yeah. If I could interject to you, that, that brings up a point too. If it's not a bylaw or it doesn't go through and to town meeting, just thinking out loud. Then it won't be part of the package that the bylaw review committee or the council that is reviewing would have it in your hands to review as part of the bylaws.
By the review committee canon does initiate bylaws and can add anything to that process as is desired by the committee. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude the committee from adding additional pieces in. It's more that the issue comes in, if it is in the middle of process, it then has, has fixed language. That would then need to be changed with, in a couple of years. And now you have multiple sets of zoning bylaws on how to do a rename. And with all zoning changes, every time there's a change, it introduces complexity. So that, that's the reason why I would recommend that the concept be preserved, the submission be done. And we can, we would certainly notify the, the legal council that this is a part of what needs to be submitted as part of the recodification. Cause there will, there will certainly be other things that are not massively, i- and not intended to be massively substantial in policy. But things to clean up, concepts, clean up components of the zoning bylaws themselves.
Understood.
As we're doing with all the others.
And Dan, to understand this process, if our board were to so if our board agrees on this bylaw, we go to town meeting with it. While we go to town council, it's an article at town meeting and it's reviewed and passed a town meeting. It then goes into the bylaws, um, however long it takes.
Right. So it then goes to, it goes to the attorney general who may, may make force modifications. Then it has to get up, right.
Then it goes to publication. So and that's going to be taken to probably springtime. Before it became part of our bylaws, correct? Around then.
Right.
Just to give you an example, yeah, Phil, I mean, the zoning change that we did in May, we just heard back at the end of August, we need to publish in the newspaper. So.
Yeah, I remember Mr. Mullen saying like six to eight months is usually about right to where it hits. Um, for us, for us to not bring this to town council and forward to town meeting as an article, what would our process be? If it's not a bylaw, it's not a change to a bylaw. But Danny, you're saying that we would petition the bylaw review committee with this verbiage that has not been approved at town meeting to move forward with it. And then what happens at that point? Does the review committee added to the council that's reviewing the bylaws, bring it back to us? And then it goes to town meeting, say like in a year or two or three? I'm trying to wonder what the process is.
You, you're, you're very close as to what I would anticipate the process would be. So it would, the, the language and, and the intent would be determined by the planning board. And I think you're very close on it. And, but it doesn't have to be perfect. At that point, it would be submitted, it just as a recommendation to the bylaw review committee. We would pass it on to the legal council that as part of the review as a new component of the, the zoning bylaws. Who would then incorporate it into the zoning bylaw recodification process. And
You're missing the question though, is that, the, the question is that if, so we refer this to the, the recodification process. That does not mean the town, townsfolk via a town meeting have indicated that they're amenable to it. Or they've given them the ability to, you know, vote up yea or nay on, on it. You know, as, as it relates to this specific item. So if we, we're basically in my mind, if we refer to the bylaw review committee, we're punting the application of this until after the bylaw commute. The review committee is completed and then it has to get referred to town council.
Well, from bylaw review committee actually goes back to the planning board. Because we have to, we have to have all, all of the zoning change just still go through the zoning pro, the zoning review process. So it will come back to the, to the planning board as part of the recodification process. And from there it would go to town meet. And that will be, not be a single vote. That will actually be a series of votes on different, different segments.
Attorney McGrath has, his hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chair, that I think there's a little bit of a disconnect here because I think Mr. Lieber is thinking that this is a zoning bylaw change and it's not, it's a general bylaw. So this would not be part of the zoning, um, review process because it's outside of the zoning bylaw. I believe, I believe this is a general bylaw. It has nothing to do with zoning.
That is true. Article five of chapter.
I think there's like, kind of like, uh, a disconnect on, on the discussion in that, and that might not change Dan's, um, perspective on how it should proceed, but I don't think it would go before the special counsel. If, if that person is just going to be reviewing zoning bylaws, because this, this is not applicable to that.
That's a good point. I was thinking of all, like the bylaw review committee is all the bylaws, not, not one of the other separated, but I could be wrong.
I think it is.
It, it, it is all of the, it is all of the bylaws. And the general bylaws, so those that are not in chapter one ninety go get reviewed, uh, in depth with attorney Mullen, town council Mullen. And chapter one ninety at being anything that is in one ninety, if it were to get numbered in that way is considered zoning and will go before, we'll go with the zoning council. So the, the numbering of the, this does actually matter. And that's why, when I saw the original proposal, it did look, look like it was intended to go in chapter one ninety, which would mean there would be a part of the zoning process itself. Not every segment of that is necessarily covered by the zoning act. But it is all considered from a town bylaw perspective to be under the zoning, zoning area. That, and that's the reason why the, the recommendation is being made differently. If it is going to have a, a completely different numbering sequence outside of the one ninety area, then it can certainly go forward. And at that point, I would again recommend it go to the bylaw review committee for review prior to going for town meeting, just so that there aren't any issues that come up. I, at the, at that time, the planning board as any multiple member of board in town does have the right to bring any, any article to town meeting, including a bylaw. So there's, there's no issue with the ability to, it's just a matter of making sure that it's as, it's as good as it can be.
I didn't have a headache before we started this. I thought this was going to be an easier one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is all good information, Dan, and, um, always appreciate your, um, understanding and expertise and sharing this stuff. If, um, I think as a board, we need to discuss this and see, do we want to move forward with a recommend, with a vote and recommendation to town council to add this to the town warrant, um, as is? Or do we want to, as Jim said, punch, but recommend it to the bylaw review committee? And possibly wait three years for this to come through? Back to us? And then forwarded to town council to town meeting.
Yeah, I, I am. Yeah, I certainly want to respect the process and be as efficient as possible. I'm, I'm having a little bit of a disconnect. Um, so I should just, uh, in one, one sense, accept Dan, your, your observations about how this would be more effective to fit into the, the overall review of the general bylaws. Um, I'm, yeah, but, um, having the planning board, having spent a fair amount of time doing the, the, the research and, uh, honest deliberation on this, I, I also want to respect that. And, uh, and to Jim's point, you know, it's, it would be, I think, a positive to get public, you know, ratification of it, um, at town meeting. But interested to other comments from the board or, or, or Aaron or Dan or Brian or anyone else in the meeting.
I'm going to leave this one to the board on what you decide on your next steps are.
Right.
I can see both sides, but, um, I think this really needs to be the ball in your court.
Understood.
Yeah, I, I, where I come down on this is I feel like that we, I think to Bill's point, this came up first, the first time about a year and a half ago, and we've been in off and on conversations related to this. I feel as if, you know, Bill's done some yeoman's work, um, in terms of trying to craft this and review with town council. Uh, Tom Mullen, as I released this and Tom Mullen took a big stab at a rewrite at Bill's, uh, probably over architect, uh, language associated with it and made it more of a zoning. You know, I feel as if it's, I feel as if this is, this is ready for prime time. You know, I respect Dan and I'm sure that he's probably got, um, th- those comments, you know, probably are with merit. With that being said, I feel as if that this is a process that has been laid out and has been reviewed by a lot of the appropriate folks. And I feel as if, um, punting this for lack of a better term to a multi-year delay at this time after we've already been working on it for, for as long as we have been. I don't feel as if that's the appropriate manner. And I feel like that providing guidance, you know, if there really is a proposed street name change out there, um, I feel as if we should and should implement this. And then, you know, have that as, as a servant process. And if we pass it and there's a, you know, I know there's a number of reviews of the bylaws. Um, I'm sure that if there's anything in there that's egregious, we'll have a, there's, there'll be an appropriate bite at the apple to have it revised at a later date.
Bill, Bill or Megan? Any additional comments?
Yeah, well, I, um, yeah, I'm feeling that as well. I, I would like to move forward with in respect to Dan's comments, I would like to move forward with a vote by our board and a recommendation to town council to move this to our, um, next town meeting or, um, and then if it does pass by two thirds by the town, it could push into the mega list of bylaws that the review committee and the town and the council will then be reviewing. I would really like to have something on the books. So it doesn't wait the time, even if the wording isn't perfect. I feel like we're at a place that's been reviewed by town council, Tom Mullen. As you mentioned, Jim, we've gone back and forth, I think, just really tweaking the, the last bit to be, um, in sync with the town assessor's office and then the town clerk forward the list. All owners and residents, let's see. This last part, the planning board shall give notice by mailing notices to all owners, residents. And I, again, I respect Dan's comment about what this could mean as far as how many property owners and residents and how difficult that might be. But I feel like we need to have something on the books and then it could be discussed at town meeting. It, two thirds want it, that's fine. If they don't, it goes away. I, I, I would really like as our board to take a vote on this this evening and recommend or not recommend it to town council.
All right, um, uh, is there a motion, uh, to make favorable recommendation for, to can you send this to the town council for the town warrant?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
For the proposed street name change by law. See if the town will vote to adopt a new article five of chapter one seventy-five of the general bylaws to be entitled street names and numbers and to include with, within it the following. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, already it's like that numbers part. So.
Yeah.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jim. All right. All in favor, uh, Megan?
Favorable recommendation, yes.
Yes, all right. Bill Spalding?
Favorable recommendation, yes.
Jim Hogan?
Favorable recommendation, yes.
And myself, favorable recommendation, yes. Um, so. Um, so the the motion passes, we'll communicate it. Um, I think we do need, um, and um, all that said, we really do appreciate. Uh, Dan, you're you're joining the meeting at a late date and um all all of your feedback is. Is uh considered and well taken. Yeah, Jim.
Theo, if if the chair, the chair allows, um. Uh, do you mind if I ask Dan if he's so inclined? Can you walk us through some of those dates you were talking about in terms of the actual zoning change with the bylaw review committee? I know there's a number of other bylaws, you know, zoning bylaws that are under consideration or or talk talks about. That we may want to adjust the timelines based on some of the the that timeline you were discussing. If you're so inclined, I I'd love if you would share that timeline of what your committee is doing so we can try to sync up and be efficient. On other efforts on a go forward basis.
That's uh, that's terrific. Thank you, Jim.
So certainly, the we have undergone the process of requesting the. The bidding, well, not so much bids because it's exempt from it. But we've received a proposal and that has been forwarded to the town council for recommended action and approval. So that we can hire the. Council, legal council that town council Mullen is recommending. And that person will then start working with us directly on the zoning bylaws themselves. We have already started the undertaking of the other bylaws. I trust that Chairman Noel has already received several notes from. Sherry Dalton and Steve Mayo around things such as chapter nine, which is on governance. And we and town meeting and other components as we go through the town, all the town bylaws in an exhaustive manner. I expect the first round of changes to. Non-zoning bylaws will probably come forward in the spring. And they will probably continue on over depending upon where they are in the order and and the preparation by town council Mullen. Over the next year to year and a half, so not none this November, but it next May, then the following November and likely. May of twenty twenty-four is my is my current speculation for non-zoning. The zoning process itself. Once the lawyer had has a contract in place, he will work with us along with his team. And that process is realistically expected to take somewhere between nine and eighteen months in total. To go through the zoning process, the the zoning bylaws.
That nine to eighteen months, when did you say you anticipate that to that to begin?
I that will hopefully begin sometime. Over the next few months, I I don't know when. The town council will take the vote to actually do that approval, but I anticipate it will be sometime fairly soon. And then it will, it will start when that attorney and his team have the ability to do so. But it's expected realistically to start this winter.
And the the intent of that zoning uh reconfrecation is to reorganize and make sure. Language across the zoning is consistent, but the intent is not for a uh zoning map change or any of those other type of activities, correct?
Correct, so it 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 is to make sure the language is consistent, make sure the intent of the. Uh, the intent as written of the. Zoning bylaws using current language and current understanding of language is met. So the language changes tend to be in that vein. No maps are intended to be adjusted and i- if there were to be something that the attorney saw. Being outsider, he may see something in it, but I don't anticipate that. He's going to actually take any sort of in-depth look at the maps themselves. That would be a more significant policy change than I I think is currently anticipated to be done. But the the purpose of this is the the other purpose of this is not to make. Massive policy changes through the through this process to zoning itself.
Yeah, so the other question I have is that um the outline, the the timeline that you're outlining. Um coincides or overlaps with an anticipated zoning overlay district that the state has dictated. Uh, as part of chapter forty-eight, you may or may not be aware of, that we're actually in the process trying to tee up a process. Uh, on our side in terms of how to. Evaluate that, it's actually one of the things on our agenda today, um, do you? You know, we're not exactly sure what the timeline of that process is going to be, but the implementation coincides. Roughly with what you're talking about in terms of a timeline as a. Deadline from the state, is this is this committee that you're the bylaw review committee, if we came up with, you know, a draft? Is this something that could be forwarded to you for for review and, you know, help in terms of crafting some of that language?
Absolutely, and that that can certainly be done. The attorney that is being that that is intended to be retained is the preeminent expert on zoning. He's written most of the most of the textbooks on Massachusetts zoning. So thi- this is something that to have his expertise, I think, will be a tremendous help. Virg, I I think.
Music to my ears.
I think, yes, I I I think the. The town town council Mullen said that virtually every other town council that recommended someone recommended this particular person. So the idea, he said that our zoning bylaws are not in awful shape. They're not in best shape because it is needed, but he has seen, he has seen much worse. And the initial quote that he gave us was actually lower than other towns that he's submitted for. Higher than some, but lower than than some other neighboring ones, so because it it's just not in as dire shape as some others. The the idea is to make it so that it's crisp, it's clean, make processes so that they they allow for. Appropriate input, allow for the appropriate uses as intended. And to have the necessary processes so that property owners can have their rights respected as well as people who are not immediately property owners. So, yeah, I I anticipate that the boards will be working very closely together as. As we get into these meetings, I will certainly send out an invitation to Chairman Noel and if if someone succeeds. To that person as well and just so that the boards can work together. And you can get the the benefit of of their expertise as well. And they're all public meetings, so anyone else who is interested in this, I'm thinking like Attorney McGrail. May find these types of pieces to be very, very interesting to be a part of those meetings as well.
Um, that's really helpful and informative, we appreciate it. Alright, um. Uh, I will follow with Aaron on, um, so um regarding the the street name change. Our understanding is we've got to write a letter and get that to town council for their uh. Uh, approval, I assume under the items not anticipated by the chair, a portion of their agenda. So that they can approve it, so we can get to the town clerk by the the needed deadline, so.
Sorry, you looking for an answer for me? Yeah, I would just, if you can drop something tonight, um, so I can give it to Sherry. First thing tomorrow morning or tonight.
Yeah, alright. Do you want me to just email that to you and Sherry?
Yeah, that works too.
Okay. Tonight, alright, we'll do, alright. Um, wonderful, uh, fifth item on our agenda is uh. The discussion of the A and R plan for three fourteen, three thirty and three thirty-six Salem Street. Going to uh open uh the mic for Attorney Brian McGale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and I think you framed it appropriately, discussion. Uh, because that's what it is, um, you'll notice that I did not submit a revised plan. I stated at the last meeting that we we did not consider our. Delivering the 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 prior plan a submission because we didn't want to. Uh, start any deadlines and we wanted to keep an open dialogue uh in discussion with the board. Um, in what we we talked about at the last meeting, there was concerns with the board as it relates to what was at that point lot three. And um the adequacy of the access and 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 how to potentially deal with that and then um. Um, Board Member Hogan and I went back and forth on the Fox Feet Milton case. And I looked at that closer, Jim, and I think, I think. What that case is really saying is that you have to be, you you don't have to use the access, but you have to be able to do it. Um, is I is I read it closer, which is in essence, an argument against where I would come down on that. It's kind of a, the 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 court wasn't very clear. Uh, in its dialogue and its decision, but I think that's really what they're saying. I don't think they're going against the 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 um, the Nantucket case. I I think it it kind of furthers that line, but it's a little bit, they could have, I think they could have stated it clearer, but I think it's it's. I think that's what their intent is, so what we came away with the meeting uh from the meeting, um, the last meeting was was in essence, the board. It seemed to us really didn't have a problem with the concept, but had some issues and anxiety over signing a plan without lot. Without any note on it that, you know, dealt with the access, so. We kind of brains brainstormed and we, and if I can share my screen, we've we've come up with what I think is some language that we talked about. Maybe putting a note on the plan. As it relates to the common driveway and adequacy of access and and so we've 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 taken the liberty to do that and we. Just wanted to discuss it with the board to see your thoughts on it. Um, so let me. John, you want to share it? Can you do have it teed up or you want me to do it?
No, I can, I can share it.
Okay, that'd be great. So we actually did a couple of things and we um we renumbered the lots because uh Matt had had some issues with that. Um, and so just to be consistent with your regulations, we figured we would do that, so we've now numbered them. Eleven, twelve and thirteen. Um, instead of one, two and three, and the and the lot of concern was lot thirteen. So what we did is we put a note on there, John, can you blow that up? Because we really can't read it. So we put a note on part of the endorsement would be in, it says, note, lot thirteen shall not be a legal lot unless required relief is allowed. It as such, I'm sorry, require relief to allow it as such is granted. By the Wakefield Board of Appeals, including but not limited to a variance to allow the proposed common driveway shown on the plan. To provide adequate access to lot thirteen. So we're being just, we're right at it, we're, you know, we're we're stating the issue, there was a concern with the adequacy of the access and we're putting a a note on there that you're not. Determining this adequate access, but you're contemplating it could be as long as we got appropriately from the zoning board. Uh, for the common driveway shown on the plan. So we're interested in your thoughts on that as far as discussion goes.
While I'm trying to collect my thoughts, I will say this, I do appreciate the uh, the um. The willingness to to have this discussion instead of just resubmit and say, here's here's the clock, um. With that being said. I want to just, because I went back and took a look at the the like case laws, I could find it in terms of the um. The handbook and the one that I kept coming back to is Gallantino. Uh, which basically said that the uh, the one that we talked about, Giffords and Nantucket. It doesn't go clear, you know, this technical compliance, but they basically said that, you know, as a rule of thumb, the. The plans, you know, it shouldn't be narrower than, you know, or you know, as a plain rule of thumb, if it necks down to something super narrow. That doesn't really hi- hit the the um, the intent of the A and R um. Because it's it's not the adequacy of the of the access. At the same time, I do like what you you've proposed in terms of, you know, basically acknowledging that the adequacy of the access. Makes it so it's not a legal lot unless there's relief granted, um. I do question from a process perspective, if that is basically saying that this is a subdivision. Uh, which I know is was Matt's, was Matt Lowery's position when we were talking about this before. Um, I'd be interested in hearing what Mr. Spalding thinks from, you know, he's seen a few more of these than I have, but. Um, that's that's the one thing that, I'm not sure if that note. The the note definitely addresses the concern Mr. Lowery had, I still don't know if it addresses the issue of if this is a subdivision or not. But with all that being said, I am generally supportive of this as a as a concept.
Thanks for calling me out, Tim. I I think, yes, I have seen a bunch of these and the note, yes, it's it's going to go to the ZBA for the variance and. That's really where it belongs, um, we don't have that power to determine. Um, what the adequate access is to lot thirteen. Unless Attorney McGrail knows another way that we can do that, I I think it's it's really up to the ZBA to allow that variance. Um, for this note to be on there, for it to be like a yes or no determination to our board, I don't know, that's up to each member. Uh, for me, I feel the access to the site obviously is important, it just, it just didn't feel right. And I know we discussed that you did go over a lot of um alternative designs and tried to make this work is such an odd shaped site. Um, so I do understand the the issue with it. So um, to to Jim's point, yes, I I think this note covers it for me. And knowing that it, the Board of Appeals will be reviewing it to allow the variance or not for the access. Uh, that I think that's all we can do as a board anyway.
Yeah, the only other option would be to make us, as Jim said, to to file a subdivision, which is, you know, going to be time consuming, expensive. And 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 all you're going to do is you're going to waive. The furniture requirement in conjunction with the Board of Appeals variance, so it's kind of in essence, the same thing.
Right, right, that's the thing, right, is that, I I think if you look at like. The technical of it, like maybe you you could say that we should force you to do a subdivision, but. Does does that actually provide a public good? I I don't know if I necessarily see it.
I I think you could force us to. I'm being honest, I think, I think, you know, I mean, you know, I could make an argument that, you know, because we make this note. It creates, you know, basically the the single lot exemption that, you know, but we're not, we're not here to make arguments. We're here to move a project forward, which we think is going to be good for. Uh, for the town and and so, you know, we're not looking to get in an argument, so if you, if you, if you decide to take a hard line, we'll just file the. The, we're not going to appeal this, it's not worth it, we'll just file the subdivision in conjunction with the zoning board application, but it's just going to be. Um, it, we've done, we've done that before and it becomes cumbersome with both boards, that's all.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Well, the subdivision, Attorney McGrail, this is just going to, I mean, it's, it's not going to change much of the layout or force. The easement to be any different, it it's going to, it's going to be a list of waivers, I, yeah.
That's right.
And we have been through this a few times.
It's just this list of waivers that then has to go to the ZBA too, so you're kind of, you're you're basically asking for the same set of reviews.
I feel that way, I mean, I don't see anything, I don't see another option. Uh, from our board for an A and R such as this, it it meets the requirements. As as puzzled piece as it is, it meets the requirements. There was one thing, um, after the last meeting, you know, walking away from it and thinking like, how else could this go? And and just looking about what's around there and driving by, um, thinking about the improvements to the site. Uh, the only thing that stuck in my head was, you know, what do these become, what do these three different lots now become? Is there something? And you've laid it out for us what your intentions are, but is there something different that it could be? And and that's where um. Honestly, I'm not sure, and I don't think our board has any control over that either.
Yeah, and just to answer that, you know, because we've added that, you know, that, yeah, so the house out back is a really valuable home. It's a beautiful home, so you know, it 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 it's not financially feasible to tear that down, it's in, it's in the. Single residence district, so there's not a lot you can do back there anyways, and then we've got this four unit behemoth. Um, in that lot and then, you know, as I told you, we talked about, as everybody wants to, including my clients and the property owners. To maximize as much as possible, we talked about putting it through there, it doesn't work. Right, so they just said, you know what, let's just make it a single and then upfront is the main portion in the business district, which will be a. Um, in essence, it's going to be, it's going to be a, you know, pretty modest building, it's going to be, as I said, I've talked to the architect, three stories. It's going to look like two stories from the front because the parking is going to be under with the topography, so it's really going to fit in nice. And then um is. Um, I was speaking to um Doug Dodge, who was our broker, who's on and a former member of the planning board years. I was speaking to, um, Doug Dodge, who was our broker, who's on and a former member of the planning board years ago. Um, that one of the huge benefits on this at the end of the day is you've got a massive driveway openings out there on a, on a corner. Um, and now you're going to consolidate this into one driveway, uh, opening that's gonna be in a good area with good site distance and kind of. Right now, there's like an open curve cut almost the whole thing, which creates kind of a mess for cars going in and out and all over the place. So. I think at the end of the day, and, and, you know, I'm sure it's gonna, as you know, we'll get very well vetted at the zoning board, but. We feel that it's gonna be a, a project that people will be able to support.
Unless Theo or Megan, if, if you have any other feedback, but I, wherever my head's at, I, I'd like to. I personally feel, feel supportive of this, you know, based on what Attorney McGrath has come through to his point. I feel like we could have a. Esoteric legal argument about whether or not this fits under the technical definition, the A and R or not, but I don't feel like that's a worthwhile use of our time and. I advocate for us to, to vote on this and, or to. Give, give the applicant a strong indication of what we're gonna do with it and then move on.
Yeah. No, I, I certainly appreciate the esoteric nature of a, uh. Uh, review of, uh, applying the subdivisions, uh, control law, uh, to this. Uh, and I appreciate the, the draft of the note. I, um, I had wondered if. The, the draft of the note sort of was meant to apply to all three lots, um, beca- as a package. Um, so that we were not. So that we're, we're saying, we get the concept and we don't want to stand in the way. So.
I think the thing of the neat feel is that at least at the very minimum lot eleven, there's, there's no argument that that's not legal law. It's got frontage that's more than adequate.
Yeah.
Lot twelve, you may, may or may not be able to make the argument, but I mean, even where next down, that's still sufficient for a driveway, right? In terms of width. If I recall. Wasn't it something like fifteen feet?
Yes, fifteen feet.
And the na- the nature of the real concern Theo was where on the north side of the site where it connects down to like, I think it's like five feet. And there's no way you could get a car there. You might be able to get a footpath, but you couldn't get a car. And I think that was the nature of why the, um. Lot thirteen was really where we're, where, uh, the, the general focus was in terms of if that one was the one that could pass muster.
Right, right. But I. But I mean, I don't know, I, I was still like, uh, caught up in the concept of, uh, this is a package, but I, I appreciate that. In terms of public safety access to, to lot thirteen. The driveway is enough.
I think that's what the Z, that'll be, will is be what will be determined by the ZBA if the proposed common driveway easement is sufficient.
Okay. Got it.
And we didn't have any last meeting, but do we have any, um, butters attending tonight's meeting?
Do not know.
Think they're all with us.
Alright. Sounds good.
Not the butters, I mean, the people on, online here.
Right, right.
I'm like, okay. Little cocky.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't want to be misstated here.
Yeah, that, that's good clarification. I had to think, I was thinking of a, a wise ass remark for that one, but.
Alright. Uh, then, um, I really appreciate the opportunity for the, for the discussion. Um, so. Uh, what is next, Brian? Um, you're gonna come back next meeting?
Yeah, so the mech- the mechanics are however the board wants to, um. Do this, um, we've already submitted an application. With a check, you could just incorporate this plan and I will redate the application for Aaron, um, or we can come back to the next meeting. Um, and do this all over again. It's up to you.
I propose backdating it and then holding a vote right now if Theo is amenable to that. I agree.
Uh, I'm amenable. Um, so Megan, are you?
I'm amenable.
Okay, alright. Okay, um. Alright, uh, so is there a motion?
Motion to accept the approval not required plan submitted for three fourteen, three thirty and three thirty six Salem Street.
Writing quickly, alright, um, any second?
I'll second.
And all in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Megan?
Yes.
And, and myself, yes, so.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Right.
Appreciate, I very much appreciate the process. I enjoyed the, uh. It was a unique plan. I think we're, I think we're, we're gonna see an A and half plan of that nature. Uh, again, maybe, but, um, Aaron, are you able to get signatures on the application from? Someone that we can clock it in at the town clerk as required?
Yeah, I can get, um, the signatures needed.
Okay, and you have my authority, Aaron, to change the application date.
Okay.
To today. I'll send you an email to that effect. So you have it in writing?
Great.
Okay, if you could do that and then I can get that and I'll prepare the letter for the clocking in at the town clerk.
Perfect.
Okay.
And to the forms, the forms all set, do they have to be resent as well or retyped or?
No, um, John, did you change the date on the plan?
Yes, I did, I did put.
Why do this, Aaron? Why don't I, why don't I email you tomorrow a clean form?
Okay, that works.
Bill, that's a good point. Yeah.
Let's have it all match.
Yeah, yep. I'll email you a clean form.
Alright.
I'll clean it up, okay? And then, um, and then I'll also get you the my laws and the prints.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Very, very much appreciated.
Yeah, um. Terrific, um, alright. Uh, good news, moving things along. We are skipping item six. Uh, discussing redivision, revision of the subdivision rules and regulations and. I will turn it over to Jim for, uh, item seven, update on MBTA communities.
So the update as other members of the board, uh, may or may not have seen, uh, we, I collated a draft. Of the, uh, MBTA zoning, uh, requirements. Uh, presentation that I am proposing, we use on a series of public forums over the next couple of months in advance, uh, in order. To solicit feedback from the public in advance of advocating to town council, the, uh, formation of a working group to start. The process of defining what the overlay district would be. Um, previously, when we talked about this, I proposed in starting that process. Uh, uh, our next meeting, October twenty fifth, I think we, it's probably worth having a conversation, um. About both the presentation and then whether or not that date makes sense or if it makes sense to push it back to a later date in order to allow us more time. To incorporate any feedback from the other members of the board and or, um, you know, publicize better, uh, with, with the public. Um, so with that being said, uh, what I was, what I proposed to do is I'm just popping open the, um. This is, can people see my screen?
Yes.
So, um, first off, before I dive in slide by slide, uh, wanted to see if anyone had any. Uh, high level feedback and or, um, any particular comments, questions, uh, of this presentation that I collated. And, uh, put together for the purposes of this discussion.
Yeah, Jim, I have a couple of questions. One, um, can you just restate the goal of how this? Deck, this presentation would be initially used, like what you're looking to. Solve with this presentation?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, so the, the goal is we would have a public forum in, at some predetermined time. We would use this deck to go through some of the background of, of. What this is. Why it's, why it's happening. And what are, trying to set the table in terms of some of the, the feedback we're looking to solicit from the public. Um, as I think it's, it's basically, we're trying to address the, the whole issue we had where. When we did the, the Lake Overlay District, that public forum, um, the first one that we put together, uh, we didn't really have, uh, I, I think. We didn't provide the public enough guidance in order for them to solicit quality feedback from them. So we kind of got. A little disjointed feedback. So this, that's kind of what, this is more of a table setting, uh, background for the public in order to. Allow them to provide feedback in terms of things they would like to see or not like to see as, as we go forward on this process.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, thank you. I thought, I thought that was a case, but I just wanted to validate. And then, um, my initial feedback was that just looking at it from an outsider's perspective. It was a bit confusing. Um, there was just like a lot, a lot going on. And I know there's a lot going on and with this in general. Um, but my suggestion might be to like state. What we're looking to achieve right at the beginning, instead of giving like the, the history, like around like. Why this came to be, what the situation is like right up front being like, we're hosting this public forum because we're looking to. Solicit feedback on whatever we're looking to achieve and why we're doing that is because. The state did this, which means X, right? And then give the history. I'd kind of give a little bit upfront, like. Because when you first jump into it, I'm like, okay, like here's some stats on like housing production, right? And then like the chapter law. And then now I'm getting confused and then it gets into the what if we don't comply slide four, which I found to be set a little intimidating. Not gonna lie, um, I think that, you know, I, I understand the purpose, but I got a little scared. And so I think other people might too, like what does that mean? So I think if we can just kind of explain upfront the, the goal of what we're looking to achieve and then. Um, and then provide the background information and. Uh, I know it's, it's, there's like a lot going on, but if there's any way that we can like. Overly simplify the material. Would be my, I don't know how to do that, but that would be my suggestion because just kind of going through, I was a bit confused and I'm been in these discussions. So. Maybe not what you're looking to hear for feedback, but that was.
No, 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 uh, the opposite. No, that was, that's great feedback. Honestly, I just trying to cob- cobble this together. It's easy to get in your own little zoning hole. And, uh, not be able and speak unintelligibly to other people. So the fact that you've been in these discussions and you're confused tells, tells me that we're probably doing something wrong. So. Thank you for that feedback. It definitely, we'll try to incorporate that as we, uh, as we figure out what to do with this on a go forward basis.
Yeah, I, um. Yeah, that, that's, that's great feedback, um. The. So, I mean, the, what if we don't comply really does need to be pushed back, uh, I think to the end, um. The, we, I mean, there is also, um. I mean, do we need like a global benefits? Like what? I mean, I. I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, small stuff.
Yeah, so I, I think that, you know, the what if we don't comply, I, I can understand that. I kind of struggled with what to do with that. I kind of decided to put it at the front and the back. Cause I felt like it was important to demonstrate to people that. The state's providing both a carrot and a stick, uh, but I think it probably does. We don't need to beat people over the head to Megan's point as it relates to that and scare people as it, you know. Those types of, uh, impacts, um. For the global benefits, you know, we can see if we can go put something together. I think that, that was intended to putting in the housing production. I mean. The, the, the thing I fear about that is that people are gonna see that and say that's a state problem, not a Wakefield problem. But I'm not sure if that's, I'm not sure the best way to desegregate or, you know, desegregate that out. A lot of the studies as it relates to the housing, the impacts of lack of housing production are more statewide focused and not like town by town specifics focused.
Yeah. So, um. The. I don't know, you know, my, my personal, so. Uh, part of my understanding of this is it is about, um. Helping communities look to the future and, uh, aligning housing with environmental, uh, uh, sustainability. Um, so that does, I think, fit with, uh, goals that are values that are already established in Wakefield. The. You know, also it is about, um. Uh, lining up to. Help make Wakefield more walkable, um, and accessible, um, across the board.
But I guess is the ultimate thing, like we're looking to. Are we required or? You know what I mean? Like, I guess the wording, like, we're looking to. Based off the new. State decision, like although these things are like wonderful and great and we want walkability, it's like, if we have to do this, then we have to do this. So we're looking to determine where our multifamily district. Shall be located within Wakefield and we want public input. Uh, the reason why we need to do this. Is because the state made, made this decision. Um, and we're one of those said selected towns because we have a. We have public transit that goes directly through our town, right? Um. I mean, that's basically the reasoning why, correct?
Right, um. Uh, I, I do think there.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I mean, I think you're, I think you're substantially correct. The only, only thing that's. Which I don't necessarily think we'd want to come out and say to people, but theoretically, there are other towns who have basically said. Screw this. I don't care what the state says. I'm not doing it.
Um, okay.
The way the regulation is written, it says, you know, you shall do it. So it's, it is a requirement theoretically, but. In terms of enforcement mechanisms, the only enforcement mechanisms are, you know, we're gonna take away your funding for all these different specific programs.
Right.
Okay, yeah, you could say that in order for us to receive funding from the state.
Yeah.
Um, we need to comply and that means we need to set a multifamily district. Um, and we want, we want public input. Um, the only other slide that I felt was, was confusing is like. If I see the question, how will this impact Wakefield? I'm, I, I like to me think like, it just, what, what is, what is that mean? Like what is redistrict? Like putting a multifamily zoning district in the town mean versus like, I don't know what a hundred and fourteen acres or. Ha- like units or capacity, not necessarily, like, I don't know what that, any of that means, like. When I'm a citizen or of Wakefield, I'm like, how will this impact me? What is putting this zoning district mean? That's how, like, how I see that question.
Alright.
Like, how does it affect me?
Yeah.
A resident of the town or a, having a family in the town. Is it minimal impact? Then like, that's what I want to know versus. I guess it depends on what. That person thinks too.
Yeah.
And it also really depends on. Like, the reason I put the capacity, not necessarily production is. Theoretically, right? We could put it in a overlay district and people and developers could say. I don't think that math pencils, I don't care. I'm not gonna build, there's not interest in Wakefield for whatever reason. You go the other way, right? And people could say, oh, I'm gonna, we, we think that if we. You know, we leverage this, we can really build out the full. Capacity. So you could theoretically have, you know, go from whatever the existing use within this district to the full maximum use. You're probably gonna end up somewhere in between, but it's not necessarily. It's not necessarily clear until you put the overlay district in place and then you see what the interest from the market is.
Jim, can you jump to the next slide down? So, I'm thinking similar to, you know, thinking about. Slide before this and this slide, and I'm all for graphics and combining it somehow. If you think back to some of what we were doing with the Lake District, we're really like, here's a map of the area. Here's that half mile. I think a lot. I think if anybody attends the meetings, sorry. We need to really have that one slide. I, I think what's missing from the deck is that one slide we could keep up there. While we're having a discussion. That one slide that has the graphic shows, right, shows the possible zoning areas, has maybe on the side of it. Has maybe on the side of it, the list of factors that we're thinking about. I wonder if there's one slide that can combine a lot of the discussion points. So to Megan's point, if the first slide is, these are our goals for this meeting. And then the next slide or two states all of what we know. What we've learned between Steve Mayo's presentation to Town Council and what we have, but then the next slide just really hits on. That discussion. Now let's let's discuss. And it does have this graphic and it does have on the side of it, just the bullet points that we want to discuss, like how do we as a board? Really determine that what's gonna be discussed that night? Do we want three talking points? Do we want eight talking points? And that way we can go right down the list. And as we discuss those, we can get input on each one from the public. So I think we could start to to facilitate or narrate the um the session. By focusing like on a slide such as this with just the points we want to discuss. And then maybe the last slide in closing, like what's the next steps? So I think we could really narrow this down. And there's a lot of information here. I feel like this deck is for our board. To really understand and maybe we have it up on our website with like, if you want to know more, if you want to know all the details. This is a good deck for that. But for the actual presentation for that night, I think we can pick like three or four. Slides and just really pull, you know, here's the goals, here's the data that we have, here's the discussion points, and here's what's next.
Yeah, I love that, Bill. That's that's a great point.
And you have all the information in here. It's not, so I think it's just pulling it and condensing it to a smaller presentation slide deck. Versus this is the want to know more, here's all the extra information and how many acres and all that. That could be the detail that's needed.
Sorry, I'm just trying to process out of how to, I I think that's probably not a bad. Thought as it relates to how to simplify this. So basically, just so I I can restate what I think I just heard, right, is what probably makes more sense than what we have right now is. You have a slide that basically states what we're looking for, right? So something similar to this. You know, but with like a preamble, like we're looking for feedback. These are the types of things that we're looking to to get feedback on. Why are we doing this? Just. The state, the states in- introduced this requirement. Here's, here's the different things that they're requiring. Boom. And then here's a couple maps. That are illustrative of what a half half mile looks like. Maybe the ones that we I pulled from Steve Mayo's presentation in terms of like, here's like something that's like a thirty seven acre by like Greenwood, what it could look like for like. Two hundred some odd by uh by North Ave and then. Take that, then you have a a last slide, which is probably a a map of something, right? With all of those requirements. And then we just go through verbally. All the different things that we're looking to get feedback on. Does that seem to kind of correspond or correlate to what people think is would be more successful?
I think so. I think simplifying it as much as possible for the public forum or meeting is the is the important part. Um, and yeah, the maps from um Steve's presentation really explaining that, you know, the circle. Is misleading, but when you look at Greenwood and you look at the the area and how it kind of. Juts in and out or or is more linear to Main Street. I think that will be more receptive as um. As people look at the maps and understand a little bit more through them, the graphics, I think then the discussion will happen. Um, if we don't have that information up in front of people, I think we're gonna have a lot of. It possibly have a lot of. Misinformation or discussions that are just gonna keep going about what ifs. But I think if we show that slide number eleven. As the main one that's up there. Yeah, versus if you go up a couple slides. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think this is a great one. I think the one below it is the one that really will help that drive the discussion. And and allow people to speak. Closer to the talking points that we want as opposed to. Being um. I don't know, dismayed by just that broad circle or oval.
Yeah, I think what probably makes sense, right, is you have, what you could probably do is you could probably take these two. Maps, right? You could split them onto two separate slides and then you could take probably. Most of this information. Put it on, so you have like a map of North Ave with all these requirements and probably a couple of other ones, right? And then you do the same thing again for Greenwood. You know what I mean? And then you can toggle back and forth between the two.
Yeah, possibly. I don't think they have to be um. Super legible either. I think it can really show and we can explain the area and we zoom in if we need to.
Yeah.
And do we have an idea of where we're at in percentage to the. Minimum capacity currently if.
Aaron knows.
What was that, Megan?
Like where we're at in percentage to the minimum capacity. For this district or just our the hard SHI numbers for the ten percent, which don't really play a role in this at all. Um. So it doesn't really matter. I mean, this is just, you have to create the housing anyways, our SHI um. It won't, it doesn't really play a part. The overall goal is 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 just to create housing, no matter, you know.
So Megan, I think, I think what your question is is where, what does the that? The ma- the minimum district size correlate in terms of our overall housing stock? Is that kind of the?
Ye- yes, like with all the development that we've currently put. Near the Wakefield Station, like where does that put us today versus where we need to be?
So I think that that's, that's, I think that's actually one of the things that is the most difficult to kind of. Explain without getting into the weeds. The.
I feel like that question's gonna get asked though.
I know, so. We have to create a district that has a specific amount of capacity around the communal station. This is completely agnostic as it relates to how much has already been produced in the past. It's only just regulating the land use on a go forward basis. The the thing is that the, like, for example, the the mill building that got redeveloped. That is gonna be significantly higher in terms of a density than what we're talking about here. But it is, you know, theoretically, that could go within the district. And would count as part of the district and from a land use perspective, but there's not like, you're not like getting credit for what you did in the past, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and that's something they're still trying to work on because there are a lot of communities like Wakefield that have done this work already. And there's a firm belief that they should be credited and they're not saying projects that were done twenty, thirty years ago, like look at Wakefield. A lot of these projects have been done within the last five years with the idea of it being transit oriented development. And so. Uh, but currently under the regulations, uh, they won't be counted towards, but like Jim said, it could, those. Those developments can be within this district already and um so. Um, unfortunately, people probably won't like that answer either.
Yeah, no, they won't, but I think that glimmer of hope that it could potentially be counted would be helpful.
Isn't isn't the glimmer of hope that this helps us figure out where. Future eligible uh multifamily affordable housing might best be cited?
Also, that's so, but. You have to be careful with this because if you start saying affordable housing, people are gonna think that you can make everything affordable in these. Which there are strict requirements as it relates to how much you can dictate to be affordable within this. You can only make it so, so ten percent unless you can demonstrate. That affordability won't impact the economic viability of the proposed projects within the district, which. I don't even know what that means, but if you if you can demonstrate that, then you can get up to twenty percent. Um, so I think that if it most likely. The maximum affordable component that we're gonna be able to to include in this overlay district is gonna be ten percent.
Maximum or a minimum, I I.
Maximum. This is, this this is really about delivering market rate housing. That's, that's the stated goal of the. It of the of the. Overlay or the forty A section is that it's not, it's not intended to be a mass. Delivery mechanism of affordable affordability. In fact, that was one of the criticisms of it when it first came out is that it had no affordable. Component to it. So there was a a massive amount of advocacy, which I'm sure Aaron could probably speak to better than I could. Um, about getting an affordable component added to the to it, which it eventually did.
Yeah.
Yes, there was a lot of advocacy because it wasn't even talked about when they first rolled this out at all.
Right, yeah, right. Got it, alright. So, but back back to my my point, um. Uh, part of the reaction uh or the. The antipathy to forty B developments is. Um, we don't have any control over what gets cited where and this does help us. To encourage what gets cited.
Yes and no. I mean, it it. If you're being a hundred percent honest about it, ye- yes, it will help us do that, but this is going to be. Uh, another mechanism that it it's gonna be an overlay district that's just probably gonna have a lot of. Overlap with other overlay districts we already have on the books and it's gonna be an alternate method of compliance that. People will be able to u- utilize to uh. You know, whichever mech, you know, whichever zoning mechanism is more favorable. I I mean, that's just. I think that's gonna be, the thing is that this is as of right, so you can't, you don't have to go get a variance to have density. That's, that's gonna be the big difference, right? Uh. Where we have something similar to that to Aaron's earlier point from the. Mixed use overlay district. Um, however, that does require a variance because it's it's, you have to get a special per, or sorry, you have to get a special permit to do that. The only thing with this process will have, which will have site plan, you you are allowed to have site plan approval. Site plan approval does allow you to dictate things such as the, you know, making sure they're not putting up a super ugly architecturally building. Um. And you know vehicular access, those types of things. So you can have a site plan approval, but site plan approval can't dictate, like, you can't say. You know, reduce the number of units on this lot. It's too, it's too dense. But you you can't say that as part of a site plan approval because it's by right density.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just feel like that this, I I get it now, like, right, I live in this potential. Future zoning district, but no one's gonna build a multifamily unit. On and where my house lies. So it's just the ability, right, that to have that option within the zone. I just feel like. Outlining it this way. People are gonna negatively react. Um, where I feel like we could. Craft it in a different way to alleviate a lot of fears or uncertainty to say like. This, there is. Based off of the fact that, right, there is not a land, not a lot of land to like develop as such anyways. Um, like there is minimal impact. Um, but we do need to put a overlay district together in order to get. Funds from the state. So in order to do that, we want to come up with the most amenable solution and want feedback. But I think there we need some way to kind of communicate or alleviate. People's fears or concerns because when people see this, they're gonna just. No, I feel like they're gonna negatively react. They're gonna think like. Our towns are to already overly developed. What are you trying to do? You're trying to develop more. You're trying to put this. Thing in. What do you mean? How many more units are going in? And you're like, that's not what we're saying at all, but that's. Well, I feel like people will jump to those conclusions. I don't have a solution. I'm just saying. Maybe we address this a different w- way upfront to calm people's fears. Because if I live in one of these places, which I do.
Yeah.
You know, and I didn't understand. I'd be like, so what you're telling me is another. Cruise ship is getting set up down the end of the street for me? And that's not worth saying at all, but that's what I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna assume.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the. And this is where there's a lot that we're gonna have to work through as we start into the actual. Application of this overlay is that, you know, just because we have this. Mixed use overlay district doesn't necessarily mean that like, there's a minimum density. The minimum density is is frankly not that dense. Uh, you know what I mean? We can restrict density within the overlay district. With some caveats, which basically we can't do it above and beyond what's already kind of generally zoned for that area. Um, but it's just a matter of making it so you can be a as of right. So in terms of the 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 spaceship, I don't know if that was, I think that might have been outside of. The dimensional constraints, but I don't know if that's a worthwhile conversation even having because then people immediately start going there. Um.
But they're going to. Unfortunately, and we're not here to set, we're not here to answer those questions. Um. This is just for feedback. And and again, this is going back to my original point, what what's the end game here? And I won't speak for the other board members. That's just internally, that's kind of where I feel with that. I I totally not against public opinion or feedback. But to Megan's point, people are automatically gonna go there, no matter, no matter how many facts, the way you present it. I mean, to me, you know. The po- positive outcomes of this is redeveloping some of our downtown vacant buildings um. Through this by by right, um, making it, you know, easier for for things like that. Um. So I kind of. Wording or presenting it in that way, but then you're coming off as that's what you're thinking of doing too, right? So it's just, it's hard. It's a hard game to play in.
I mean, that's the thing, right, is that at a certain point, we have to have the the ability for the public to provide feedback because otherwise. We're gonna be accused of going it, you know, forming a working group, going up, going about with no public feedback and developing a. Something that just shoved down people's throats. So, I mean, if other members of the board feel differently. And feel like we shouldn't be having these presentations with the public, you know, we can have that conversation, but. I think that we've got to, we've got to think about what's the right time to engage the public. I mean, do we wanna try to solicit feedback in the front end and then. Feed that in through a working group process, or do we wanna just say, say, that's not worthwhile at time and just form a working group and just. Have them they develop the basis of the overlay district.
Yeah, I think this is, this is a great discussion because I think it's getting closer to where we need to be. I think proactively, we need to educate. The town on what's happening. So it does bring down the level of uh fear and understanding. Do we wanna not pose this as or sell this as a public forum as much as a public info session? How do we, how do we market it? So. It's not like, we're not looking for all your feedback that we won't be able to like. Act upon. We're really looking for an understanding together. How do we get to this level? And I'm sorry, but all the lights went out here in the office, so. I don't, I went to try to turn them back on and it's like the the whole panel is off, so. Um, do we have a daylight, uh, day lighting system here? So anyway. Um, I just think we are getting to the right place. I feel, Jim, like your your heart's definitely in the right place, like how do we. Work with the public to make the right decisions. I mean, that's exactly what our board needs to do. I think our, another part of our. Responsibility is to inform the public. So maybe this is some type of info session. And we do hold a few of them and we take the word forum out of it and we just say, here's some, look on our website, here's some. Reading materials. If you want the background, if you want to know a lot about it, we just want to get together as a group and review what we know. And what the outcomes can be. And pretty much that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I mean, what what's the best next step for here? I feel like we can. Keep this conversation going for for quite some time, like, Jim, do you think it's best for you to kind of like take some of this back and kind of noodle on it and then. Kind of come back to the, to the board and kind of re- and present like what. And then kind of come back to the, to the board and kind of re- and present like what, what you think might be the. The best way to take the approach or what do you, what do you think? You're the one kind of driving this, so.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, in terms of the content. I think that the best place is, the best way to move forward is for me to take the feedback that you guys gave me, which. One, thank you guys and two, very high quality feedback. Uh, but I think going back and revising the, the presentation, I I think I, I can put that one ball firmly in my court. The component I do want to drive to resolution with the members board though is that, you know, if we're doing like a public info session. Is the intent to have. People be able to talk and have feedback at the end of that, or is the intent to have that be a one way communication? Where it's us providing feedback to the public or sorry, uh educational components to the public and then. Because realistically, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to figure out how we go from where we are now. To. Having enough information such that we can, you know, eventually, hopefully in Q one. You know, assuming that we can drive, have a few more conversations with other relevant stakeholders on the town council. You know, Z B A, Concom, but the intent is to eventually be able to get to a point where we can. Have a working group formed that can go and develop the the basis of the, you know, the starting point, right? So going from where we are now to that point, I had envisioned this public engagement process to help feed the front end of that. If we think that that's, we think that that's not necessary, we want to just get to the point where we're forming a working group. But we're informing the public along the way and doing the educational component and starting that kind of communications outreach. Those are two very different paths and I think that we. We don't necessarily need to have resolution of that right now, but I do want to lay that out, that, that, those are two very different approaches. And we, we have probably in the near term need to make a decision. Path A, path B.
I, I, I see where you're going, but I could, I could see them combining and merging too. I could see um thirty minute info session followed by Q and A and where your planning board. We want to hear your questions, we want to hear your concerns. And let us do some research on the questions that you have to see if we can find some answers. And the next info session will be built a little bit more. So maybe it is a series of two or three info sessions that also. Combine in the feedback forum side where as a board, we can take in that public comments. And if there is any information that we know the answer to, we can provide it right away. If there's information that is not correct, we could also say, no, that is not what is happening here. And we could try to dispel any misinformation, uh but we could also take in the information that we don't know. And say, you know what, let us look that up and find the answer and we'll, we'll have that for the next session or the next forum. You know, to one more point, Jim, I don't mind if if you want to go through the presentation together, I don't mind sitting and doing that too. It's something I like doing.
I like posing as an info session with a Q and A. I think that might be a less. Confrontational format. Or it might result in less confrontational. Interaction between the public and us. That framing.
Do you sort of imagine like? Uh, it seems like we're maybe splitting this presentation to smaller bits like. So to build uh towards, because the, the, the potential future zoning districts, that's the ultimate outcome that we want to get to. Um, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to be introducing anything like that for a while and that's what the working group is. Would help.
Yeah, I, I, I view it at a certain point, right, where we get the working group put together. I I view as if the working group kind of puts their heads down. You know, comes up with the basis and, you know, works through a series of the weeds, right? And then presses print on, you know, draft. And then I probably view, you know, subject to input from all the relevant stakeholders, but I view this probably. A communication and another turn in terms of public engagement and or potentially revision based on. You know, there's the so, I I think that trying to have like a, I, I think that's why I was envisioning it as this an engagement of the public. Kind of pause on the public engagement. Relevant stakeholders heads down, develop the starting point based on all the constraints that are defined by the state. As well as the information solicited by the public in the front end and then. You know, you reengage once you actually have something to talk about. But you know, I think that if you have a series of info sessions with Q and As, then you have the working group. You know, whenever they do their work, there's probably a pause in that and then it restarts as soon as you have something to talk about.
That makes sense to me.
So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't, why don't we plan on talking about this the next meeting? Between now and then, I'll update this with the, the intent to have it be more of an info session, pare it down. Get it ready.
Yeah.
If everyone's in conceptual agreement, then we can get, you know, we can probably eventually get both of these up on the website. And then maybe we set a course as it relates to the timeline of these info sessions. At the next meeting and then we can continue to talk with other relevant stakeholders as it relates to the timeline of the working group. You know, at, the way I was envisioning this previously was that there'd be three info sessions probably on a monthly cadence. Just because tha- that way you're giving the people the ability to actually engage, they miss it once, there's another one in a month, you know, there's a series of them. That, you know, if, if that holds and we basically X out the October one, we go November, December, January. That would put us into having the working group ready sometime in the month of February. You know, that feels like that might be a workable time. I know that there's a number of other. School related votes that are going to be dick, suck up a lot of people's time and attention uh in January. Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Alright, um, thank you, Jim, for uh pushing this forward. And thanks, everybody. I really appreciate the, all the feedback and all the, all the strategic thinking, so. And we certainly don't want to. Right, jeopardize any future efforts, so. Alright, um, I think that's the end. Does anybody have any items not anticipated uh that they want to discuss?
I'll just make a plug, um, we are, or Theo, I don't know, you'll talk about, but just we're having our in person master plan me- meeting next Wednesday. At the Galvin Middle School, October nineteen, um, from six thirty to eight thirty, um. Yeah, six thirty, eight thirty, uh talking about transportation and climate and uh climate sustainability and resiliency. And then that's all I have really planning related and our bike ped plan. Uh final report will be presented to the town council on Monday, October twenty fourth.
No, I, I was, I was just going to say that, um, and I'm excited uh for this in person meeting and for the transportation survey that. That's going to come out. And we can all be there together because it's permitted for all of us to be together in a. Public gathering, so that'll be nice.
I thought that was, that that was a violation of the public, the open meeting law.
No, no, it's, we're, we're allowed, um, you know, we are not deliberating. We are just part of this public process, so we're allowed to be there.
Yeah, you're, as a resident, you're not there representing the planning board.
Right, right. We wouldn't be doing anything formal, so. The uh. Yeah, and we had a great time at town day, so. And the legas were a great suggestion, Bill, so. Uh, that, that's all I wanted to say, um, the, so, thank you very much. I gotta go write a letter. So, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
You can make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, alright, all in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so. Alright, um, fantastic, um, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Theo. Have a great night.
Yeah, great stuff.
Great night, guys.
Thanks.